All right, we're going to call to order the July 21st meeting of the West Sacramento City Council and Redevelopment Agency. I'd like to ask our guests to join the council and staff in the pledge of allegiance. And I'd like tonight to invite the brand-new superintendent of the Washington Unified School District, Aiden Gillen, to lead the assembled group in the pledge.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Superintendent. The council did not meet in closed session this evening, so we're going to proceed directly to our general administration agenda, item 1A, which is presentations by the public on matters not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the city council. We do ask that anyone wishing to address the council on this or any other -- is that better, Mr. Lowell? Is the mic on now? We do ask that anyone wishing to address the council on this or any other item this evening to please fill out one of the yellow cards. It's available at the front door. And turn it into the city clerk. In front of the clerk is a timer that we use to make sure that everyone has a chance to be heard. And so to that end, we ask that all comments be limited to no more than three minutes. We also recognize that for some folks, speaking in public can induce some amount of anxiety. So we ask that there not be any boos or applause or cat calls and that we maintain a civil discourse here in the chambers. Also in front of the clerk is a flip chart, and that simply indicates which item on our agenda the council is on at the present time. I know, I don't see them yet, but for the council's benefit, the mayor of Davis and the mayor pro tem of Davis are expected to be at tonight's meeting at some point. They are doing a tour of cities in the region that -- where they can see more civil meetings. I think it's the email that I got, so they want to look at models of civility and effectiveness at the council. So they're on their way to our meeting this evening. I told them they should plan to get here before 2:00 in the morning, if that's what they're used to, because we will be out well before then.
It ought to be easy with three minutes.
Yes. All right, so we do have a couple of requests to speak on item 1A, and the first is by Ben Davis, Jr.
Counsel members, I'm here in part because the last time I spoke, is this on?
I don't see the light. It's hard to see from here, but it doesn't look like the light's on.
I'm afraid I don't know how to turn it on.
Your finger is right at the right. It's there?
No, now it's off. Well, I hope to use three minutes, so I hope that this will be taken into account. It looks like I'm about half a minute through it.
She'll start the clock over.
And in fact, a part of what I came to discuss was the fact that I was cut short last time I was speaking here. I rambled, I assume according to your judgment, too far off of the topic that was before you. And I was cut off after about a minute and a half from speaking. I came because at the time, it was a little embarrassing, and I gave up the floor because it was insisted that I do. But in considering it, I'd never seen that done before here. Perhaps it has been, but not at the city council meetings that I've been at before. I certainly had another minute and a half of speaking to do. In part, what I wanted to say was, in reading those descriptions and reading stuff, just the things that you provided for us in the agenda item, and I did go online, as the mayor suggested, and looked as closely as I could at these things, it's still largely a mystery to me what is being considered until I get -- it shouldn't be. Until I get here and sometimes even after I've heard it voted upon, I'm not sure what's been done. Those aren't written really for the layman, your descriptions of what's going on here. I might have wandered off course last time, but it didn't seem like it was called for to interrupt me. And in fact, I'm not sure if that may be a Brown Act violation or not. I remember from when I studied such things that there was some sort of case law or something about Brown Act that said you did not have to even provide a forum for people to speak. But if you did, and if you adopted rules, you had to hear by them and hear by them, adhere by them evenly. So I'd be interested to know if you have cut other people off. And if you have, then I would acquiesce. I would say, well, then I was treated evenly. I don't think I should have been cut off. Basically, what I was leading to was that there are three or four agenda items last time that mentioned bridge project, Tower Bridge or something like that. I assumed they were related. It looks like they aren't. But still, to me, they are. I mean, if you're doing some project over on one side of town and another project on another side of town, and they're all part by the river, they should be considered in a related fashion, and it should be coordinated so that the city understands them. Or so that a person like myself who comes here shouldn't need to have a lawyer to describe to him what's going on. It'd be nice if we were a little more user-friendly, I think is the term I'm using. And especially in terms of user-friendly, if people weren't cut off mid-sentence and things. So my general question to you, these other things being stated, is this something, and I guess this is to you, Mayor, more than the rest of the board, have you treated other people this way? Do you cut them off mid-sentence if they seem to be going further than that? If so, can you give me an example of that or really make it clear that that is the case?
So we'll come back to, remember, we do the response to the public comments after all the comments have been heard.
Then I'll get a response. I appreciate that. The other thing, somebody brought up to my attention was, I've been here before because of first-time homebuyer loans. I looked at one agenda item here on block grants. It did not appear to me to be related to first-time homebuyer loans, but they thought it was, the person who asked me about it. If I'm mistaken, and this agenda item is related to first-time homebuyer loans, please bring that to my attention, too, because I might need to stay for that item and take a closer look at it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. And Bill Lowell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, William Lowell of West Sacramento, for the record. And this whole tree situation makes me think that, hey, we can take out any tree we want as long as we agree to plant a handful of new trees. And this latest situation where, you know, we had to have it because of all these millions of dollars that were, we might lose if we didn't get it done right away. Where was the planning? Where was the proper hearing prior to that? So these creative emergencies are what seems to be. It's kind of frustrating. And I noticed almost two weeks ago, week ago Thursday, when we had the fraud workshop, why, I was sitting in the same place, and we had, I was up here for about two hours while different individuals got up to this podium to speak to the audience. And I had no problem, and I don't think anybody else had any problem hearing any of those speakers speaking in here to this podium. So I think there's a little something there. And I thought it was very interesting, last week, when I was out at the Walmart, I was chatting with a fellow that works there, talking about how much hotter it gets in that bus shelter when it's like 100 degrees. It's about 15 to 20 degrees hotter inside that shelter. And he says down in Los Angeles, they use solar power to cool the, to cool things down inside those bus shelters. So I think we might check that out. And if they can do it in L.A., I don't know why we can't do it in the Sacramento area and let Mother Nature provide that energy for us. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lowell. Those are our only requests on item 1A. Okay, I think Ms. Davis got an answer on the second question from Ms. Colas just now about the specific agenda item. We have, there are two components of the council's agenda and two kinds of public comment that can be made. So the first is under item 1A. And in this item, it's essentially free-for-all. Any topic, as long as it's within the jurisdiction of the council and the city, is fair game. And so it's been rare, although it has occurred that we've cut folks off who are talking to us about an issue that happens to be before the United Nations or the U.S. Congress or the White House. But it's rare, because it's an opportunity for a public forum. And then the specific agenda items are limited to testimony about those items. That's consistent, both of those policies are consistent with the Brown Act. But we do, and we always have, I think, from the incorporation of the city, provide pretty broad latitude about what that really means. So it's rare. It doesn't, it has occurred, you know, probably less than once every other year. So it's rare, but it does happen, that we're, we simply have to say, in order to keep the business of the council proceeding, allow everyone a chance to be heard, that we need to stay on the topic of the agenda item that we're currently considering. All right, so item 1B is council communications. Are there any reports to other communications this evening? Mr. Johansson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I attended the executive commission on the homeless tenure plan on July 15th. This was the second full meeting of the commission. And the items of significance is, we adopted a one-year action plan. We still need to flesh out the leaders of each particular action plan, but we're on our way there. And we also are making headway into basically cataloging all services in Yolo County. Because one of the reasons for this tenure plan is to try to find ways to consolidate services to prevent redundancy. So we've come a long ways in doing that. But it's an ongoing project. It's fairly complicated, as you all might know. So that was it for that meeting. Thanks.
Mr. Kristoff.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The JPA flood protection between the city of West Sacramento, RD 900 and RD 537, we met on June 25th. And a couple of the items that were discussed of any importance were the two sites, the river site and the Sac, and the site at the Sacramento River at the port are moving forward. And we are really looking forward to working with the people at the rivers. We've had some outreach there, and a number of folks have expressed some interest in the slurry wall and the possibility of relief wells. And so those are being explored. And at the Sacramento River, at the West Sacramento Port, we're looking at the setback levy, and we're moving forward with that. One of the things that we will have is a public review of the draft EIR. And the review period will be ending July 12th. And so that's right around the corner. And so if anybody has any comments or anything, we certainly need to move forward with that. We are still working with the state of California. We are owed a few bucks. And we're working with the state in order to make sure that the city of West Sacramento gets reimbursed, so that we can take those reimbursement dollars and reinvest them in these other sites that we're looking at real closely now.
Okay. The executive committee for the Sacramento Area Council of Governments met last Thursday to take up the region's applications for the Tiger II federal money, the $600 million that is expected to be available nationwide for Tiger II. And the council knows we were one of the handful of cities in the country that got a Tiger I grant when that pot was in the billions, and that's for the port marine highway project that we're doing with Oakland and Stockton. So I think I've reported previously that the two that we knew were going to be in the mix were Watt Avenue I-80 interchange and the Sacramento intermodal facility. Those two remain on the list. We added one additional big capital priority, and that's the bridge on the Feather River between Yuba City and Sutter, Yuba City and Marysville, excuse me. We, at one point, had in process a countywide rail relocation and levy setback option that was pending, and I think the council is aware of at least some of the details of that proposal. We weren't able to secure complete sponsorship by the other jurisdictions on that project. And so it wasn't competitive moving forward any longer. So that project isn't in the mix for Tiger, for Tiger II. Honestly, it was a long shot anyway. Because we were, because we got Tiger I money and hardly anyone else in the country did, we were going to, we'd be hard-pressed to be successful in Tiger Round Two. But especially if we didn't, if it wasn't the project that was being sponsored by Woodland and the rest of the county. There is an additional project that's part of the rural set aside, that is the road between Davis and Winters that is on, that is on the list for a couple million dollars. And although that's not in our jurisdiction, to the extent to which we can get projects like that funded through these federal pots, it frees up money at the county level that we, that will be available on a countywide basis for other jurisdictions, including us. So we're advancing that. No surprise, we're not advancing I-5113 as a major capital project. All right, item 1C is appointing to boards and commissions. We have none of those this evening. So item 2 is presentation of a proclamation recognizing Dave Brooks as the 2010 State CIF Tennis Coach of the Year. Is there a motion on the proclamation?
It's been moved.
It's been moved by Mr. Kristoff and seconded by Mr. Johansson. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, hearing none. That motion carries. I'd invite Mr. Brooks and also Superintendent Gillen to please come to the podium. So I first would like to read the proclamation into the record, because we're extraordinarily proud in this community, both of this specific accomplishment, but also the full range of career achievements and contributions in our community of Dave Brooks. So this is a proclamation of the West Sacramento City Council, recognizing Dave Brooks as the 2010 State CIF Tennis Coach of the Year. Whereas Dave Brooks was first employed with the Washington Unified School District in 1985 as a summer employee, and whereas Dave began his career with the Washington Unified School District in 1998, where he began working with students as an instructional aide. And whereas Dave began his formal teaching career with Washington Unified School District in 1999 as a special day class teacher. And whereas Dave has been coaching in the district for 24 years, during 20 of which he has served as the varsity head tennis coach at River City High School. And whereas from 1991 through 2010, Dave coached 386 tennis matches, 386, with a win record of 318 and just 68 losses. And whereas, from 1995 to 2010, Dave served in various league positions, including league coordinator representative for tennis and Division III section tournament director. And whereas from 1996 to 2009, Dave and his teams won 14 league championships and two runner-up section championships. And whereas many of Dave's players, this is not right, Dave's players, period, have great respect for Dave. I've never met one that didn't, and have spoken about the positive impact Dave has had on them throughout their time at River City High School. I see at least one of them here. And whereas Dave's extreme energy, enthusiasm, and commitment to tennis has served as an inspiration to everyone who knows him, but most importantly, he has made a difference in the lives of those young people who have been fortunate enough to call him coach. So now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the city council of the city of West Sacramento does hereby offer its congratulations on Mr. Brooks' well-earned honor, 2010 State CIF Tennis Coach of the Year. Congratulations.
I asked him if I had to speak, and he confirmed that, yes, I do. So I want to thank the city council members, those to my right and those behind me, I'm sorry. It's a great honor, and it means even more to me because I'm from West Sacramento. And, you know, I was born and raised here. I grew up here. I went to the schools in this community. I went to church in this community. My folks still live in this city, and so it's quite an honor in that respect. And I want to thank those of you who came out to support me tonight. Mr. Ledesma is here, the Potnick family, tremendous supporters of River City tennis over the years. Thank you. Ms. Eklund, Ms. Pachdason, thank you. The Reinharts. Jefferson's going to be a freshman, not soon enough, though, because he'll be on the team here next year. So it means a lot to have you, your support, and I'm very grateful and very thankful for this. When I, the last time I was in these chambers, I was speaking before the school board, and I said then that when I went to the state banquet to receive the award, I'd be representing not just, you know, our team and our former players and the current players, but the school, the school district, and the city of West Sac. So I went to that, and I kept that in mind while I was there. And then today, I was on the tennis courts this morning for three and a half, four hours working with kids, and then I finished the day here tonight. So it's a tremendous honor, and again, thank you. Thank you very much. Thanks.
Yeah, I want to be sure that Mr. Beers and Mayor Protem Viegas both had very much wanted to be here. They're both out of, on their way back in from out of town, taking care of some important business, and they wanted to make sure that they were able to convey their appreciation. You just saw that Dave is just a fantastic representative for our community and everything that he does, and we're all extraordinarily proud of him. Dave, thank you so much for taking time out of your schedule to be here tonight. We know there are games for you to coach and kids and others for you to inspire, but we appreciate you taking the time. And I also want to thank the superintendent for, you know, just arriving in the community, and he's here tonight to support the tennis coach. And that's, you know, that is important to be part of the work that the inspirational employees and staff and team of the school district and the school are engaged in, and that's very much appreciated. And I'd like to invite Mr. Gillen to please just say a couple of words. We welcome you to the city, to the city council. We're looking forward to a great partnership.
Likewise, Mayor. Thank you very much for the invitation to be here. I am here truly and specifically to support our wonderful tennis coach, Mr. Brooks, and I'm very proud of his accomplishment. I feel somewhat responsible for the great tenure he's had. He knows I'm kidding, I hope. But really, it's truly an honor for him, and he's really brought a bright spotlight on our community, and it's a wonderful thing for our kids. So we're very appreciative of his accomplishment and his hard work and commitment. What I've heard about Dave, not knowing him and not shaking his hand until just this moment, he's a very humble gentleman. He's here for the kids. He's not here for his own recognition, and I think that that makes it all that much more special. So we're very fortunate to have him on our team, and I'm very fortunate to be here with you tonight. Thank you again.
Thank you so much. All right. And for those of you that are here for Dave, there's, it's perfectly appropriate to get up and walk out when you want to. You don't have to wait for a break or for the lights to go out, but you're also welcome to stay. That brings us to our consent agenda, which is items 3 through 10. Any item on the consent agenda?
Four.
Okay. Item four is consideration of an amendment to the contract with interior harness on the West Sacramento General Plan update. Mr. Johansson.
Yeah, thank you. Steve, in general, I don't have a problem with this. The only issue, when we were going through the whole general plan process even way before this, it's really, it was brought up, it's really important to get community engagement. And the community outreach is so important, particularly in West Sacramento, as we are planning our future. There's a number of areas in this contract that are stricken that deal with community outreach. And I just want to make sure that those aren't going to be dropped, but the city is taking up that. And to make sure that we do not, I know we're having difficult economic times, we do not skimp on community outreach during this process.
That's a good point, Councilman Johansson. And basically, what we've done is remove the consultant from the process, but we've taken on that responsibility on our own, meeting with groups, going to local television stations throughout the area when the preferred alternative was going on. But it was something that we felt that we could best do as opposed to having the consultant perform it. So my assurance that that process will continue through the development of the policy document as well as development of the IR.
And the scope of the outreach wouldn't be different between Mendir or the city?
It would basically be transferred from their office to our office. And even with our reduced staff, we still think we can do a job that everyone will be proud of.
Good. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you. Then is there a motion on the consent agenda?
It's been moved.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Ross.
Items, item seven, we've asked that that be voted on separately. It can remain on consent, but it needs to have a separate vote. It's the bonds.
Okay. All right.
Move the items less, item seven.
Okay. It's been moved by Mr. Johansson and seconded by Mr. Kristoff. Consent agenda minus item seven. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, hearing none. That motion carries. Item seven.
It's been moved.
Been moved by Mr. Johansson and seconded by Mr. Kristoff, seeing no further discussion. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, hearing none. That motion carries unanimously. These other two really slow down our meetings when they're here, don't they?
Yes, they do.
All right. That brings us to our time set agenda. Item 11, which is continuation of public hearing and consideration and of appeal of the planning commission's denial of a conditional use permit to sell hard liquor for Aggie Liquor and Deli in Jefferson Plaza located 3170 Jefferson Boulevard. At the request of the appellant, we've been asked to continue this appeal to a date uncertain, seeing no objection. That will be the order. Item 12 is a public hearing and consideration of resolution 10-22, certifying the list of weed abatement charges directing that a lien be placed on the subject properties and requesting inclusion of these charges on the secured tax roll in order that they may be collected in the same manner as general taxes. Mr. Rizzi? Fire marshal.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. I don't think I have anything to add to that. We're here to answer any questions. We've tried to answer as many questions or complaints about the weed abatement process, and hopefully, we've answered all those concerns prior to this hearing tonight.
Any questions at this time, before we open the public hearing? Seeing none, we'll open the public hearing on item 12. We have no requests to speak, but does anyone wish to address the council on this item, since it is a public hearing? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and return it to the council for any further discussion or for a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Kristoff.
I've moved that we approve resolution 10-22, certifying the list of weed abatement charges and direct the Yolo County auditor to add the expenses to the individual tax rolls.
All right, that's been moved by Mr. Kristoff and seconded by Mr. Johansson.
And there is an addendum that came with it that I'd also include in my motion.
All right, so the adjustments to the parcels, all right. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, hearing none. That motion carries. Item 13 is a community development block grant public hearing for consideration of the 2009-2010 grantee performance report. Ms. Colas.
Each year, the city is required to conduct a public hearing prior to submitting the grantee performance report to the State Department of Housing and Community Development for activities that were funded with CDBG funds in the previous fiscal year. This year, the city had a number of grant activities that were ongoing. Your report outlines more than what is just being reported in the grantee performance report, but my presentation will be limited to the report because that's what the public hearing is, requires. CDBG funds are primarily used for targeted income group households, 80% or below of median income. This year, we had funding available for our owner-occupied rehab program. We did one loan and one grant to a household. The council did approve a change to our guidelines in April, which allowed us to do energy efficiency grant. grants, and five of those grants were approved. However, they're not reported in the GPR because they were not completed before the end of the fiscal year, June 30th. Funding was used at the Parkside Apartment Complex. We do not have a report in this GPR on the tenants that went into those units because they started moving in after July 1st, but that project, the construction is nearly, the residential construction is complete, and the infrastructure we're paying for is narrowly complete. In a previous year, the city provided a loan to United Bakery, that project has now created a total of 25 jobs. And this past year, we provided two new CDBG business loans. Between those two, five new jobs were created. Those are the activities that are reported in the grantee performance report, and I'm available for any questions or...
All right, are there any questions at this time? All right, seeing none, we will open the public hearing on item 13. And we have no requests to speak, but it's a public hearing, so does anyone wish to address the council on item 13? Mr. Lowell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, William Lowell again of West Sacramento for the record. It continues to boggle my mind why we don't at least have some kind of idea of how much money we're talking about. I know, I know you have it on the computer and all that stuff, but there's still a few of us that are not necessarily in the dark ages, but we still get the newspaper, and I guess that's going to become a thing of the past pretty soon. But until such time as, that's the majority, as long as we're spending the public money, I think the public should know how much money is being talked about and so forth. But maybe, like I say, maybe I'm living in the dark ages, but thank you anyway.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lowell. With that, we're going to close the public hearing. Louise, do you have anything further? Just the agenda, our agenda books, they are online, but they're also available at the library and here at City Hall, still in physical form. The agenda summary, which I know you have, Mr. Lowell, is intended to be easy to read so that laypeople can see the gist of what's happening, and so it doesn't include every detail because it's intended not to overwhelm people with too much information, that's what the book is for. So the dollar figures are all in the agenda book that's at the library and online, they're just not in the individual summary, and we have them before us. All right, are there any further questions or discussion on this item?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Kristoff.
Not moved, council approved grantee performance report and direct the city manager to submit the report to the state CDBG program.
All right, it's been moved by Mr. Kristoff and seconded by Mr. Johansson, seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed, hearing that motion carries. Item 14, presentation and discussion of ordinance 10-12 amending chapter 17.14 of the West Sacramento Municipal Code, making changes to the zoning administrator function. Mr. Kala.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Recent budget cuts to the planning unit have caused us to take a look at developing a new paradigm for how we look at certain land use discretionary applications. Minor land use applications were felt to be one area that we could make the most impact on and the swiftest. Right now, zoning administrator permits count for up to two-thirds of all applications received by the city. These kind of applications include things like minor wireless permits, mergers, line adjustments, and occasionally minor variances. These applications are currently processed by the zoning administrator but require ratification at the planning commission meeting by the planning commission. These administrator actions are rarely pulled off the agenda, they never really have ever been an item of controversy, but they take a lot of time in presenting them to the planning commission. So the proposed amendments that are before you tonight do a couple things. First, they consolidate the functions of the zoning administrator into one place clearly in the municipal code. Currently, it's spread out in several areas. Certain functions, such as the function of festival permits, which is no longer a function of the city, have been eliminated. Second, the changes affect how applications will be reviewed and reported. Under the proposed amendments, once an application is complete, staff will ask the zoning administrator to approve an application and immediately send the approval form to the applicant. If the zoning administrator feels that the application is controversial, then the zoning administrator reserves the right to have that item heard by the planning commission. Applications that have been approved by the zoning administrator will be transmitted to the planning commission through a vehicle such as the administrative newsletter but will not require action. And then last, the provisions for appeals of the zoning administrator have been revised slightly and reorganized. These changes will also allow the city to act expeditiously on zoning administrator actions. Typically, these are actions that come apart, come about at the last part of a longer series of entitlements where only a merger is needed or something, and having them wait upon a meeting of the planning commission results in undue delay. So we think that not only will it speed up our process, but it will continue to make us more competitive in the region as how we handle these minor land use permits. The planning commission considered these changes last Thursday night at a workshop. The Chamber of Commerce testified that they support the concept, but that any cost savings brought about by only having to have staff review them be eventually passed on to the applicant. The planning commission stated the same concerns, and basically how we would address that issue if the council chose to adopt this action, perhaps a year after having experience with this, we'd, as part of our annual fee update, we'd look at it and maybe adjust the fees downward if in fact we are spending less time on these type of zoning administrator applications. Tonight's meeting is a workshop only. I do wish to make one change to the recommended action. At the time the report was prepared, we didn't believe we'd have a meeting of the planning commission the first week in August, we now will, so this action would come back to you on the 19th as opposed to September 1st. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, Mr. Johansson.
Steve, are there, are any other cities in the region using this process?
Yes, yes, there are several cities that use a process similar to what we're using.
And have they had any experience in potential cost savings that maybe we could look at as far as monitor for this first year?
My sort of analysis of it, we're already at the, probably in the lower quartile of costs in the region for zoning administrator actions. Some cities, like the city of Sacramento, do their subdivision maps, their minor parcel maps this way, and that was originally part of our proposal when we brought this issue up about five years ago. But we can look again and sort of monitor of what their cost savings have been, but specifically have we looked at it since they've done it? No, although I expect that there will be cost savings that hopefully will be able to be passed along.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Kristoff.
Yeah, Steve, I mean, I support the item, I think it makes some sense. The only one area that I would really sort of question, and that is to have the planning commission only meet once a month, and that sort of seems like it's etched in stone. I think if we reverse it a little bit, if there were two, at least two planning commission meetings a month that were, in essence, sort of scheduled, and there wasn't enough issues that, you know, warranted a meeting, then I think it's easier to cancel the meeting than it is to call for a special meeting. And so, I mean, I would, I would still say that I think it's probably a good idea to look at planning commission at least meeting, you know, twice a month, because there are, you know, there's, there're, and as development starts to occur, you know, we may get to a point of like we were in the past, so you get three, you know, but I mean, still, it's, I think that that's something we should take, those would be the comments that I have on here.
All right. So the events of the last couple of weeks have, at least for me, made me a little more sensitive to these questions around what is staff level determination and what is, what is put at least at some point in a public agenda for a public meeting? And so I actually wanted to get into the details here. So for the minor wireless telecom permits, what is that, what is the scope of that?
Typically, Mr. Mayor, it's someone adding antennas to a existing monopole, co-locating, or maybe they're moving the location on the pole, they're not constructing a new pole, or, which if they did, would be a conditional use permit and would require a public hearing. So they're minor, a little actions typically with the volume of activity that's going on that area, it's typically adding additional antennas or replacing them with new technology.
Okay.
And these are rarely items that are controversial.
And interim parking lot permit?
Rayleigh Field, the other permits that we have associated with interim parking, we do typically three permits a year for the major providers. That will of course change with the development of the Bridge District, but very few permits, all in February to April of the year.
And they're, they're limited by ordinance or something to a fairly, to a one-year timeframe, or?
Yes, one-year timeframe, that's correct. And I think in the future, we should perhaps keep to that with the changes in the Bridge District, eventually when the district is developed, we may be able to do it for a longer period of time.
But not, but, okay, but not at the zoning administrator? I guess, my concern is I don't want, I don't want parking lots to be, to be given any sort of long-term or medium-term vested rights without at least the planning commission seeing it, if not us.
Right, yes, but we're doing, correct, but so the permits that are being proposed here are the one-year baseball permits. If there was felt to be a controversy however, or a change, a significant change in the parking program for Rayleigh Field, then the zoning administrator would refer the item to the planning commission. So the zoning administrator will reserve independent judgment that if it's controversial, there's a change, then that person's going to pass it along to the planning commission. However, if there's no change and it's exactly the way it was last year, then I think it's prudent for the zoning administrator to approve it and pass it on directly and act on it.
Sure, that makes sense, I'm just, you know, this, this sort of a change, it's still appealable, but it's highly unlikely that anyone but the applicant is going to know that it's occurring. And I don't just mean the parking lot piece, but you know, any of these changes, whereas today, anyone else that sees the agenda, most likely being planning commissioners, is a separate set of eyes on it. And under this process, it's appealable, but there's, but nobody would know to appeal, or very few people would know to appeal unless they were super interested in that specific element. And so it's, which I understand, it makes sense, but that's, that's the only reason why I'm trying to, you know, in some of these specific areas, just make sure that the, the field of what we're talking about is sufficiently narrow so that we're not... So the, the next one is on the fencing of, for non-conforming junkyards?
In my 21 years, we've never had a action on one. But we did find it in the municipal code, we found it there, but there has never been an action that's come to the planning commission on that.
But it's currently a zoning administrator action?
It is currently a zoning administrator action, yes.
So if I apply, if, to the zoning administrator for a permit for fencing around my non-conforming junkyard, which I do not have, but if I had one, is there some process that assures that both adjacent and nearby property owners who might have a concern about my non-conforming junkyard are aware so that if they, if they want to contest it or appeal it or learn more about it before it happens, that that process occurs?
If we had a request, and like I've indicated, we've never had one before, I think it would be prudent in that case for the zoning administrator to schedule before the planning commission. Again, you know, having that independent judgment to, this has never occurred, let's have the planning commission hear it.
Well, I guess, so that's, but that's an example of one where, where there's almost necessarily other parties in interest than just the applicant. And so there needs to be some mechanism whereby those other parties, neighbors in this case, could be, would, we could be assured that they would be aware. So that we're not going to look at it, the planning commission isn't going to look at it unless somebody who might have an interest in it sees it and wants to appeal it, but we need to make sure that they know that it's occurring before the fence goes up.
In addition, in addition, and I neglected to bring it up at the beginning of your question, we will also as part of the process would have a 500-foot notification before such time as the zoning administrator actually acted on that permit. So we would notify the neighbors in the vicinity 500 feet from the parcel.
Okay, okay, great. Mr. Johansson.
Yeah, maybe just to follow up one of the mayor's questions, right now, there's a 10-day appeal period, which seems to be fairly tight, particularly as a mayor pointed out, there's not going to be a lot of eyes on, on a lot of these issues. Is that typical to have it that short, or what, a 30-day period?
Right now, with the exception of subdivision maps, all actions of the planning commission are appealable within 10 days. Maps are, I believe, the only action that have a longer period of time, and that's set of course by municipal code.
Oh, that's mandated then?
Actually, both, both of those are set by state law.
Okay.
Oh, they're set by state law.
Now, the city could extend that appeal period, I think, but, but statute requires 10 days for zoning actions and 15 days for MAP Act actions.
It just seems to be a pretty tight, tight deadline for someone if there's a problem, you know, because we receive our council packages once a week. Whenever these hearings are going to be, we potentially, I mean, we'll, we'll get one within that time, but I guess we could, we could always see how it goes and if there's a problem, modify it later.
Okay. All right, so this is a workshop only, is there any further discussion? You have sufficient...
Is there enough direction from the council?
Yes, yes.
Okay, all right, then we'll move on to item 15, which is consideration of disposition of Lisbon Firehouse. Mr. Johnston.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Staff is here before you tonight seeking approval to move forward with the sale of the Lisbon Firehouse for the common benefit of the citizens of West Sacramento and to refer the matter to the planning commission for a determination as to the consistency with the general plan. The Lisbon Firehouse has served for the past 10 years as a storage facility for parks and recreation equipment and supplies. During that time, staff has entertained a number of proposals for different uses of the firehouse, including boxing gymnasiums, daycare centers, a number of different uses such as those. Unfortunately, none of those proposals provided the resources necessary to make the improvements to the building to provide public access, mitigate some of the environmental issues that remain there. Most recently, the West Sacramento Historical Society proposed to lease the firehouse for artifact storage and rehabilitation. Council asked that the Parks and Community Services Commission review that and provide a recommendation, and during that review, November 7th of last year, there was a significant portion of the firehouse that was destroyed by fire. We lost about half of the equipment that we had stored in there. Shortly after the fire, we formed an internal task force to look at the direction, the future uses of the firehouse, where we might go. We felt that it was pretty important to seek some community input, so we actually went out and hung door hangers on doors, 150 of those, on homes in the vicinity of the firehouse. We also invited the Bright-Broderick Community Action Network to actually participate in some of that input. They held a meeting, and the results of that meeting really supported the staff recommendation, which is to, again, move forward with a sale. Provided the council approves the recommended action tonight, the item would be handed over to the city's real estate team, and then they'll develop a strategy for how the sale will actually, actually take place. Be happy to answer any questions, that's it for my presentation.
Are there questions from council at this time? Mr. Johansson.
Yeah, Bob, I know, I know in the, just on, I know in the survey, many of the responses indicated that if it was sold, the proceeds should be reimbursed in Bright-Broderick. And I know that's not in the action you're requesting, so there's no earmarking of those funds, but, but how would we do that to basically solidify that intent that the property is sold, but the funds would be used for a project of Bright-Broderick?
I think it would simply be a matter of council direction if that's something that the council wanted us to consider, I think, I don't think there's any objection to that.
Okay, thanks.
So technically, I mean, we would, we will ultimately be appropriating those funds, so we're not providing direction to staff to go do something. What we would be saying in our action is simply stating our intention, this council intends that we will be investing those funds in the bright neighborhood. All right, we do have one request to speak on this item, it's by Jim Brewer, on behalf of himself and the Broderick and Bright Community Action Network.
Good evening, gentlemen. I just wanted to put a sharper point on some of the comments and the alternatives here. As BB Can was involved in discussing this issue with the Lisbon Firehouse and talking to members of the community and conducting the survey, there was one point that was very, very clear to us, that was made to us, and that was this property, whatever happens, should not become a commercial piece of property. It should only be allowed... It should only be allowed as a single family or at most, because of the size of the building, if someone was to rebuild the building, is a duplex. Because of the parking constraints and just the neighborhood itself, it's a real small parcel. So I would encourage, just as you were perhaps talking among yourselves there about assigning the prerogative of how you would spend the money in bright, I would also encourage you to give that same kind of direction to whoever's going to manage this real estate and disposing of it. Give them the same direction to make sure that it doesn't fall into some other use other than single family or a duplex kind of dwelling. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Mr. Brewer. And then we'll return to the council for any further discussion or for a motion?
I just, I mean, I, I think that the, the points that Mark and, and the points that Jim have brought out are, are, they're good, they're valid. I think that makes some sense. The firehouse is near and dear to me. I mean, this is something, I used to work right down the street from them. I mean, I, I would hate to see a commercial endeavor go there. I do think it should be residential in nature. Duplex is fine, but a lot, of course, a lot depends on the design. A lot will depend on, on the amount of square footage you do have for parking. I really can't remember the total square footage of that lot, but I don't know if it's as big as some of the residential lots. It might be a little bit smaller. But anyway, I mean, I do think that, I think it's appropriate that we do sell it. And I also think it's appropriate that we use those dollars for some purpose in, especially the bright area. Because this facility has been there for an awful long time. I mean, I can remember as a little kid, my father was a volunteer fireman and he used to run down to the firehouse when they rang the bell and that sort of thing. So I mean, I do know that, you know, the, there's, there's a lot of history there. And so I certainly would want to make sure that we spend those dollars in the bright neighborhood.
All right, very good. Is there a motion then on the item?
Mr. Mayor, I would move forward that with the sale of the Lisbon Firehouse in the bright area of West Sacramento and find the sale is a common benefit to the citizens of West Sacramento and direct the matter to be referred to the planning commission for determination as consistency with the general plan.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. That brings, I would like to note the, the arrival and presence of the new, newly sworn-in mayor of the city of Davis, Don Saylor, who will also be the newest member of the Yolo County Board of Supervisors in January and is a member of the SECOG board as well and a, and a good advocate, not just for Yolo County as a whole, but for our community as well. Welcome, thanks for being here. We are, we've just completed our last action item for the evening. Everyone in the room has been complicit in trying to move our agenda quickly so that we would finish before you arrived. So that brings us to council calendar, which is Ms. Richardson?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this Friday night at 6:00 PM is, will be West Sacramento Day at the State Fair. And at 6:00 PM, there will be a parade of West Sacramento interested, interested parties. So the chamber is coordinating that and there'll be various groups and city vehicles and celebrating West Sacramento. So if you are interested in participating in the parade, you can contact the chamber or any member of the public can. And by participating in the parade, you can get a free ticket to entrance to the State Fair. Then on the, the 28th of this month, there's going to be a meet, another meet and greet with the new superintendent who you met tonight. That will be at 6:30 to 8:00 PM over at the district offices. And on the calendar, it also says that the Up for West Sac meeting is going to be here at the Civic Center. We decided to move that meeting to the district office so that the, that board could participate in the meet and greet with the new superintendent. On August 9th, we, we were notified by Congressman Thompson's office that he's going to be, be here and having a community meeting at Margaret McDowell Manor from 10:30 to 11:00 PM, 11:00 AM, I'm sorry. And he's wanted us to help get the word out to the public that he will be there to hear their issues and concerns. And finally, we have a, a number of projects that are going to be coming to completion within the next couple of months. So we'll be having a series of, of celebrations of those. The Streetscape project is scheduled to be completed on August 9th, the Transit Center September 15th, and our community center is scheduled to be completed by September 20th. So you'll be hearing from staff as to days that we might be scheduling some celebrations for those events. That's all, thank you.
Mr. Kristof.
The river's groundbreaking, did it get moved?
I'm sorry?
River's groundbreaking, did it get moved?
I mean, Bridge District.
I'm sorry.
Yes, it was scheduled for July, July 27th and we, it's not, we had to cancel that and we're in the process of trying to reschedule that. A new date hasn't been set yet, but I think we're looking at mid to late August.
Okay. I would just pass along a request from Supervisor McGowan that we, this time it not be scheduled during a board of supervisors meeting because he's very interested in participating.
Oh, thank you.
He's been a key partner on the project. All right, city manager report?
Yes, I had an opportunity last night along with council member Johannesen to meet the new superintendent and have a conversation with him. I'm very impressed with his desire to have a cooperative relationship with the city and will be sitting down in the next week or so to talk about our current programs and prospective programs.
Questions on the city manager report? City attorney report?
Nothing to report.
Staff direction from members of the council? Mr. Kristof?
No.
Oh, those notes are something else?
Those notes are for Charlene.
Ah, okay. Mr. Ross, just, we, we didn't have the tree issue on the agenda this evening and we don't have it scheduled. I did want to just ask under this item, if we can get some, some background, I think, I think one of the experiences that I gleaned from this process is that we rely heavily on the judgment of arborists, professional arborists in, in the administrative process. And as a result, we don't review them. You know, the, the, most issues with respect to trees don't come to a body of citizen decision makers because we've determined them to be scientific biological decisions to be made by professionals. And what we, what we at least saw during this episode was a half a dozen arborists with a, with two dozen opinions about it. And, and so it raises this, the question as to whether or not at the level of administrative, the level of public review or other, other review of the arborist determinations might be appropriate or not. And I don't, I don't, I don't have a view as to what that might, what that might look like, but I'm just wondering whether you might be able to, at some point, give us some, some thoughts about how we might assure whether, and there was an editorial in the News Ledger today that said, you know, maybe, maybe just sunshining those determinations earlier in the process at a commission or something, sort of like the zoning administrator action so that people can see that it's occurring. But some way to assure that a single arborist may not be the determinant, the determining factor in a decision of that, of that type.
We will have, have actually, and will continue to go back and look at both the tree ordinance and our processes. Many of the things that we're talking about actually are not part of the tree ordinance per se, they're part of the sequo process. And so I think we're going to be looking at that and possibly examining the use of an advisory body for some, some of those determinations or providing some more specific notice. So I will be able to report back to you at some point when we've had an opportunity to review that. But you, I think you're right. A lot of this happens though in the context of actions occurring and long periods of time passing between those actions. It, it turns out the, we had originally done a tree survey with a reputable, large-scale, regional, objective arborist. And then we subsequently hired a different arborist who gave a slightly different opinion and other people brought in their arborist who gave other opinions. So I think you're right, there, there is some ability to get different answers. And I think one of the things that we could do, especially in projects of this scale, would be to isolate those potential issues and see if we can have a mechanism to get more public review.
All right, any other staff direction items? We have no future agenda item requests and I'd love to create some drama for the mayor of Davis, but we have none. So is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded by Mr. Johannesen and seconded by Mr. Kristof. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Meeting is adjourned.[1768.69][1768.69]